And one to two. Other than that, we're doing inspections, of course. But our number is 860-561-7530. And there's four inspectors that you can talk to and we'd be more than happy to help you and answer the questions that you have.
Excellent. Well, thanks so much, Tim, for sharing this information. And thank you all for tuning in. And for now, I'm Renee McHugh with Tim McColteague, and have a good night.
Hello, I'm John Sablon. You may remember me from television news. I'm now on the board of West Hartford Community Television, WHC-TV. I'm talking to you from the public library because the two organizations have a lot in common. For instance, here at the library, you can reach out and touch just about any part of the world, free of charge. On the other hand, through WHC-TV, you have access to everything in and about West Hartford, right from your own home, and once again, free of charge. Now, I have to be very honest with you. WHC-TV is a nonprofit organization, and as such, we need your help to keep doing an ever-improving job of servicing you. Now, you can become a member for just $35 and help us an awful lot. You can help us all go a long way. Just think of it this way: you're investing in yourself. Thanks.
How are your little ones?
They are excellent. I'm pretty worn out, but they're good. We were in DC from last Wednesday through Sunday. Next Sunday night, my wife got up at 5:00 yesterday and went to Monroe. We both got up at 5:00 today and went to Monroe. Yeah, we're actually, next week, we're flying to DC. Tuesday, Wednesday. We watch in Washington, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then coming back Christmas Eve to spend Christmas. Absolutely right. No complaining about not getting to DC. But I have a picture of the two of them. Colin is 17 months old. And while he's a gorgeous college student, he's decided he's just a failure.
Well, you showed me one of the pictures where I think your daughter was...
Yeah. He's just a piece of... Colin's a wallaby. Just ridiculous. And what did you with him? We're getting along famously. Careful, Kevin. By the time the weekend was over, he was Colin.
It's good to see you, Matt.
Wow.
Hi, Mary.
I'm going to look around. I had to get it. I'm sorry. It's in my...
I would have a festive holiday in...
Call the 7:25 public comment to order. Roll call, Ms. LeBrow.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Fay. Ms. Kerrigan.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Wenigred.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
From Gary Bent regarding a fracking waste ban.
Okay, so I thank the council for giving me this time to speak. I am Gary Bent. I live at 1250 Farmington Avenue in West Hartford. Can you hear me all right? Hello, hello, whoa, no. Well, I can speak up. Okay. Thank you.
You don't need to do that. You should be up.
All right. Does this sound okay?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm Gary Bent. I live at 1250 Farmington Avenue in West Hartford. I'm here to ask you to pass an ordinance to ban fracking waste from being stored or used in the town of West Hartford. In your packets, there should be a sample ordinance to ban fracking waste, a fact sheet on fracking waste, and a first sheet for a petition for such an ordinance. The first sheet lays out a case for such an ordinance in a series of wherlasses. Over 30 towns in Connecticut have passed a very similar ordinance. Currently, there is a moratorium preventing fracking waste from being deposited or used in Connecticut. The moratorium was established by Public Act 14-200 and took effect on July 1st, 2014. The act requires DEEP to submit regulations governing the storage and use of fracking waste to the Legislature's Regulation Review Committee between July 1st, 2017, and July 1st, 2018. The moratorium is in effect until these regulations are approved. So far, DEEP has not written any regulations. So we have until July 1st, 2018, for something to happen. In the legislative session of 2014, there was strong sentiment for an outright ban of fracking waste from the state. The moratorium was adopted as a compromise with a few legislators who oppose such a ban. If there was not a moratorium, Connecticut already have fracking waste being deposited and used here. Several counties in New York have banned fracking waste, but some western New York counties have not banned it. In 2014, 460 tons of fracking cuttings, sludges, and muds were dumped in their landfills. 4,286 gallons of wastewater was sent to their landfills for storage in barrels, and 42,456 gallons of produced water was spread on their roads. Fracking waste has continued to be sent to New York, but I do not have the figures for later years. In 2017, the General Assembly had a bill to pass a ban on fracking waste being accepted or used in Connecticut. This bill was passed in the House but was never called in the Senate. So it just missed out on a statewide ban in the last legislative session. The current movement by towns to ban fracking waste is ensure that they do not have fracking waste in their landfills or decontaminated wastewater used on their roads. Here are some reasons for passing a fracking waste ban ordinance. Waste from fracking, short for hydraulic fracturing, contains water, rock cuttings, and sludges. These are contaminated with carcinogenic chemicals such as benzene, heavy metals such as arsenic and mercury, and radioactive materials such as radium and radon. Number two, oil and gas companies are seeking ways to dispose of billions of gallons of fracking waste. Number three, the temptation to lure standards to make Connecticut companies competitive for accepting hazardous fracking waste will always be present. Landfill disposal of fracking sludge and cuttings could contaminate them for thousands of years. Storage in closed containment tanks could eventually result in permanent groundwater and surface water contamination. Number five, spreading of fracking wastewater for dust control and de-icing on roads increases the risk of exposure to drivers, pedestrians, and contamination in nearby fields and surface waters. I also want to mention that on January 10th at 7:00 p.m. in Room 314 of Town Hall, Jen Siskin of Food and Water Watch would be doing a presentation on fracking waste and local town ordinances. So I encourage all of you who can to attend her presentation. She's an expert on the subject, and I'm sure it'll be very informative. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bent. I appreciate it, and we will make a motion to adjourn. I will make a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Just as a follow-up to that, I think we will be referring this to, when we talk to Mr. Bent, we will be referring this to Community Planning Committee. Okay. And is everybody all set for the council meeting? Yes. Okay. We will call the council meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Give the flag to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start into the form of... We're going to start with roll call. Sorry, Ms. LeBrow.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney.
Here.
Mr. Wenigred.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
I just want to start by saying that we are all thinking about our neighbors and friends in California and what they are experiencing. I just checked recently, and over 1,000 structures have been destroyed and tens of thousands displaced, and there are thousands, I think close to 10,000 firefighters battling fire, so they're all in our thoughts and prayers this evening. I would like to make a motion, actually, to suspend the rule to share a proclamation. So moved? Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you. We have, we just, I was lucky to accompany our 11 veterans that were inducted into the Connecticut Veterans Hall of Fame on December 4th. We had one of our own, West Hartford resident. There was a beautiful article in WEHA about them and also at The Current, and I just wanted to put on the record that Benjamin Cooper is absolutely one of my heroes, and if you have not met him, you should. Ben, I will just read the points of this proclamation that are appropriate, but Ben was inducted into the Hall of Fame December 4th, was born in Avon, Connecticut, has been a lifelong resident of West Hartford, attending local schools, and graduating from Hall High in 1940. At the age of 20 years old, he enlisted in the United States Army and was trained as a combat medic in the 45th Infantry Division in Europe during World War II, serving the wounded and often dying, and was present for the liberation of Dachau concentration camp. Ben Cooper also realized his experience needed to be shared, as difficult it was for the purpose of helping today's youth understand the realities of war and remembering the Holocaust. Benjamin Cooper has received numerous invitations to speak about his war stories and applauds audiences to save humanity, stop hatred and bullying, and always remember we belong to the same race, the human race. And whereas Benjamin Cooper facilitates roll call and informal free gathering of storytelling and sharing where veterans from all branches of the service share common experiences on Monday mornings at the West Hartford Senior Center. And then he was proclaimed to be, that we appreciate his service to the country and encourage all to embrace his important message of tolerance and kindness. And it's something that we really value, and he is a remarkable, remarkable man. Okay, so number four. Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the minutes of the town council meeting, 11:14, 2017, and 11:21, 2017, as well as the minutes of the public hearing ordinance concerning temporary health care structures, 11:14, 2017. Public hearing ordinance amending certain standards and creating new incentive-based zoning. Standards applicable to the central business, BZ, zone, 11:14, 2017. Public hearing ordinance establishing definitions for and permitting of experiential recreation and restaurant facilities, 11:14, 2017. And public hearing ordinance requiring entertainment licenses for indoor recreation or amusement facilities, 11:14, 2017. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. The next section is the public forum section, but before I get into the rules of the public forum section, I just wanted to let you know that item number 11, the supplemental motor vehicle tax levy, we are going to be voting to table that item. I will explain why, but we will not be voting on that particular item. We will be voting to table that item. So that means it will not pass. So if you were speaking to that, you still can speak. We're happy to hear you, but we will not be passing that. So the first speaker that has signed up is Jeff Howard. Oh, I'm just going to give you the rules of the road here. The public forum section of the town council provides you, our citizens, the opportunity to address items on the council agenda, those items that we will act upon on tonight's meeting. To ensure that everyone has had the opportunity to be heard, that the council can efficiently administer its business, certain rules have been traditionally followed. They are fairly simple. If you speak at the public forum, please state your name and address for the record. In the event you are not from West Hartford, if you are not a taxpayer or resident, just tell us, and we will entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow you to speak. You have up to three minutes to speak, and you are allowed to speak again to any item on the agenda that is not subject to a public hearing. And so we will start with Jeff Howard. Come on up, and I think you're going to have to use our revised mic.
May I ask for clarification first? If an item is not on the agenda, it's, public comment is not relevant.
Correct.
Correct. So a public statement, you heard earlier, is or is not on the agenda?
That's not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next is Bernard Pelletier.
I think that falls under the same vote.
Thank you. Okay. Michael Winterfield Field? Maybe the same? Alex Rodriguez? Okay. So we will be referring this to a community planning committee, and maybe we can invite the public and put a notice on if it's Ben's committee, so I will refer to you, Ben, but we will, we have your names and addresses, and we can follow up with you on when we talk about it. Okay? Thank you so much. All right. If there is anybody that has not signed up to speak to any item that's not subject to a public hearing, please come on up. No? Okay. Number six, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we place items number 14 through 16 and 22 through 28 on the consent calendar. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we set for public hearing on January 23rd, 2018, at 7:00 in the Legislative Chamber and refer to TP and Z and DRAC, the application on behalf of Zarjack Partners LLC requesting modifications to the existing conditions of approval for Special Development District Number 97, located at 21 Brace Road and known as the Firehouse Square. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we adopt a...
That was a slip. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we adopt a resolution setting town council meeting dates. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Hopefully, all of you have had a chance to review that. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Good night. Thank you for coming. Number 10, Ms. Kerrigan. Oh, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number 10, Ms. Kerrigan. You're going to recuse yourself. I am, but I'm going to flip to you, and then I'm leaving.
Okay. Number 10, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I move adoption of a resolution regarding the purchase of the University of Connecticut West Hartford campus property.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Davidoff and seconded by Mr. Dodge. Any discussion? Mr. Dodge.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And by the way, congratulations. I think that's actually the first time I've had the opportunity to call you that at a council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
As you know, I've recently, I've been appointed chairman of the recently created ad hoc Subcommittee on Economic Development. And although the council as a whole has been looking at the purchase of the Yukon property for more than a year now, one of the Subcommittee's first tasks has been to guide the council through the final phase of the purchase. And we've come to a consensus recommendation that, given the uncertain scope and cost of remediating the property, the council should not proceed with the current purchase agreement. So just as some background, in June 2016, the council voted unanimously to authorize the town manager to execute the original $5 million purchase agreement, which included the payment of a $250,000 non-refundable deposit and a clawback provision, which would have allowed Yukon to share in any profit if we had resold the property. At the time, I think that there was general agreement amongst all members of the council that this was a unique opportunity to control the future of a very large, very important parcel of land located in the heart of West Hartford. So since then, we've obviously had a number of twists and turns and bumps in the road that we didn't necessarily anticipate at the time that we executed the agreement. And when we entered into the original agreement, we knew that we would not be purchasing a pristine piece of property. And it was common knowledge that most of the buildings were showing their age and needed a significant amount of deferred maintenance. What we did not anticipate, however, was that the due diligence process would reveal the presence of PCBs on the site, both in the buildings themselves and in the areas adjacent to the buildings, and that this is going to need to be remediated at some point in the near future, either by Yukon or whoever purchases the property. So in January of this year, we were also forced to contend with a series of state budgets that would have frankly had a devastating financial impact on West Hartford. Fortunately, the bipartisan budget that was passed in October restored much of our town aid, but I think all of us are fully aware that for the foreseeable future, we're likely to face some pretty tough state budgets. And so last spring, Yukon offered to reduce the price to $1 million, primarily, I believe, in recognition of the financial challenges that the town was facing as a result of the state budget, and I think also in recognition that the site was going to require a significant amount of work in order to remediate it. And so even at the reduced price, there was some disagreement amongst the council as to whether we should continue with the transaction, or, given the remediation costs and the budget pressures that we were facing, terminate it at that time. So speaking for myself, I still felt that the purchase by the town was the best way to control the property. I was also very cognizant that we were unlikely to recoup the money we invested in the deposit, and I felt that we didn't have anything to lose in accepting the new offer, especially because Yukon was willing to extend the due diligence period without requiring any additional compensation from the town. And before I go further, I just want to thank Yukon for its patience and understanding throughout this process. Throughout, since the original agreement was executed, Yukon has granted the town with seven extensions of the due diligence period, and they've also reduced the purchase price by 80%. Again, without requiring any additional payment or compensation from the town. But understandably, Yukon needs a final answer at some point, and so informed us recently that it would require the answer to make a decision by the current deadline of December 15th. And so over the last few weeks, my Subcommittee has held a couple of very intensive meetings on this subject. And by the way, the Subcommittee, I know it's new, is made up of myself, Mr. Barnes, and Mr. Wenigred, but all of these meetings have been attended by other members of the council who have participated. And so we've met with town staff, special legal counsel, who has expertise in these kind of environmental issues, and engineering and planning consultants. And at the end of the day, we just couldn't get sufficient comfort, we just couldn't get a sufficient comfort level with the scope and the cost of the remediation or the potential timeline. We would have immediately fallen under the regulatory jurisdiction of unfamiliar state and federal regulators. And so we've determined that, given the potential costs and uncertainties, this is just not an appropriate risk and liability for the town to take on. And certainly, this isn't a question that we considered lightly, and since we announced what our recommendation to the council would be, I've heard from a lot of residents who are passionate about this issue. I've heard from some who are relieved that we won't be taking on... I've heard from some who are relieved that we won't be taking on a risky new financial burden. I've spoken with others who are concerned about the fate of such a significant property that's located in a residential neighborhood bordered by some of our major thoroughfares. And I've seen comments from people who remain convinced that purchasing the property is still the right thing to do, that given the potential uses and the limited amount of open space in West Hartford, this is an opportunity that the town cannot pass, pass on. And so I want to assure everyone first that the town will continue to have significant influence over the future of the property. There's currently very restrictive zoning of the property, and it will likely require zoning change if it's going to be developed to any significant density. More importantly, we're not going to simply throw up our hands and walk away. We plan to immediately begin an intensive community engagement process to get public input on what the future of the property should look like. My hope is that we can take what we learn and initiate an RFP process to find a partner who will purchase and develop the property in a way that best meets West Hartford's needs. I believe this process will be to the benefit of not just West Hartford, but also Yukon, as anyone who wants to develop the property in any kind of intensive way is going to have to ultimately go through us. And for this reason, I'm confident that we can maintain our cooperative relationship with the university. I know that, like many people in West Hartford, I'm a proud Husky, and I'm hopeful that Yukon will continue to work with us going forward. And so for those reasons, Madam Deputy Mayor, I urge adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Mr. Hart, could you share a little bit with us about the, about the lease, particularly as it relates to the Miracle League, as well as any zoning control we have?
Would be happy to do that, Deputy Mayor. I would invite Deputy Corporation Counsel Bonham to come forward, as well as our Director of Community Development, Mark McGovern.
Thank you. The, oh, that's right. The current lease for the fields goes until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. There is a provision for one additional five-year extension beyond that, as long as there is mutual written agreement between the parties, and there needs to be one-year notice for that, so there would need to be noticed by June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. There is also a provision in the lease stating that either party can cancel the lease with one year's notice, but it's clear from the lease that should somebody else acquire the property, the provisions of the lease would, would continue as written. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Good evening. In terms of the zoning, the property on both sides of Trap Brook Drive is R-ten, single-family residential zone. The buyright uses for the R-ten zone would include single-family housing in either a typical type of subdivision, or as an open space development if approved by the TPZ. Also, with a special use permit, religious, education, and park uses are also permitted uses.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. This has been a long, been a long road. I think we found out, I think it was two thousand and fourteen, when the University of Connecticut provided notice that they were intending to sell the parcel and move into downtown, into Hartford. And I recall, in August of two thousand and fourteen, attending the first public, really outreach meeting on the Yukon campus with then-Mayor Slifka and then-town manager Ron Van Winkle. And from there forward, we've been involved with the potential purchase of this property, actually going to contract, I believe, in two thousand and sixteen. And town staff, Mark McGovern, Bob Palmer, John Phillips, our former town manager, our current town manager, and the council have spent a lot of time thinking about purchasing this property, and actually, over the last number of years, going back and forth with that, and during that time period, having one for-profit international school interested in purchasing the, the property as well. And then, when that failed to go forward, having the town step in and pursue the purchase. So a lot of time and money has been spent on this. As Mr. Dodge mentioned, back in April of this year, there was a vote whether to continue to go forward with the process. Some of us didn't want to go forward with the, the purchase, some did. I can say that I'm relieved and happy that we're in this position tonight to, to terminate the contract and not go forward with it for the reasons, basically, that, that Mr. Dodge set forth. And I do agree that it is in the town's best interest if we are able to engage in community outreach, talk about potential ideas for the, the property, and to work with, with Yukon if they will work with us to reach an agreement on, you know, the best possible use and something that will enrich and enhance our community. And I look forward to doing that. Finally, I'd just like to thank Mr. Dodge and his committee for the work over the last couple of weeks, trying to be creative and think outside the box and get us to where we are today. I think it's the right decision to get out of the deal and to try and take next steps and see what we can do with the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Wenigrad? Mr. Penigrad?
Used to be called that.
Used to be like J-Lo.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I said it right, so I had to slow it down to make sure I got that right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Again, as I said. Thank you very much. I'll be short, I really appreciate the comments of, and the history from Mr. Barnes and Mr. Dodge, very succinct and thorough. I'm, you know, I think to some extent, we've completed, we had a Plan A, and Plan A didn't work, and I think for the reasons you both stated. I'm excited about Plan B, because Plan B is where we begin the community engagement to work a different plan to do the best use for this property. We'll be doing it, hopefully, in great cooperation with Yukon, in cooperation with whatever developers find an interest and respond to an RFP, and most importantly, with our, with our community. Over the past couple of years, as we've discussed this issue, my biggest frustration has been that we're spending our time talking about the business aspect and the environmental aspect, and not getting a chance to talk to the community as much. And we, we've all heard it constantly, hey, what are you going to do with it? Can you put this there? What about that? And we've kind of had to avoid those questions because we didn't know and we weren't ready yet. So now is the time. And so as we roll out this, I think you used the word intensive, it's going to be a short timeframe, we have to be quick on this, we have to bring people together, and start having these really serious conversations about what we want for the property, so that we can best work with Yukon to make it happen to the benefit of the whole town and the neighborhood. So I will ask people, when, when we seek volunteers, when we put out notices for meetings, please, please come. We need people both from the neighborhood, but also from the town as a whole. As has been stated, this is really a town-wide issue. Obviously, the people in the neighborhood are going to have the most input, we expect they will be the most involved, but really, you know, this is not an opportunity that will come very often. It's a lot of land, we got to get it right, and I'm excited about getting to the, you know, hearing that feedback and really getting West Hartford doing what we do best, which is planning for our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wenigrad. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, appreciate it. I'd just like to reiterate the thoughts everyone said, particularly thanks to Mr. Barnes, Mr. Dodge, Mr. Wenigrad, I thought that we had really good discussions last couple of weeks on this issue, came to a consensus, which is great. And town staff was extremely thorough, there were long meetings, a lot of very detailed probative questions, and everything was, I think, addressed in detail so we could make a good decision. You know, the history that was put before you earlier is, really tells a story. We're in really a different world than we were a few years ago in terms of the fiscal realities that we face. And so whatever proceeds forward, I think we have to just be guided by two concepts, which is that we got to only act in a way that's in the benefit of the town, I'm sure that's what we would all do. But in particular, with the potential liabilities Mr. Dodge talks about, we have to make sure that whatever we do, Yukon's liabilities don't become our own, and I'm sure we'll be cautious in that regard. But it's been a thorough process, and from the town's perspective, all we did was our due diligence, and in that, we became educated and made an informed decision, and it takes time, as anything does with working with a massive bureaucracy. So I did have one question, if I may. Mr. Town Manager, if, the resolution contemplates a potential appropriation at some point, if that were to happen, the terms of that would come back before us, is that right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I've been sitting around this table for quite a long period of time, and probably was here when we first went on that visit to Yukon to see the state of the buildings and to have a presentation when they were talking about how they were going to dispose of the property, and sat through many, many hours of discussion. So this evening, I want to start by thanking our town staff for doing the steps necessary to get the council informed as to the pros, the cons, understanding the operation of the particular parcel, especially that has the buildings on it, what a purchase of the property would mean, what scenarios would be available for development that would fit in current zoning or other options, and we saw a lot of different things, and we went through a very deliberative process to get to where we are this evening, and that was part of what we consider to be due diligence. And I thank everybody who's ever sat around this table, involved with this issue, has taken it quite seriously and has asked the right questions, asked the tough questions, to make certain that we were doing things that were in the best interest of the town. I don't think it's a secret this evening that my position was, I always felt that it would be in our town's best interest to purchase the property, to control what zoning would appear on the property. And I thought that the one million dollar purchase price was, was, was a fair price to do that. I'd like to thank the University of Connecticut for allowing this opportunity for the town to pursue those options. As already been pointed out, that what's uncertain as of the date, as, which is the drop-due date, is Friday, the results of the testing, the estimated cost to remediate the, the property remain the big unknowns. And I think it's, it's quite clear that, as a fiscal conservative and one who's a little risk averse, that it would not be probably in the financial best interest of the town to pursue, to proceed down a path that would not be certain as to what the financial impact could be to our town with respect to cleaning them up. And when you're dealing with the EPA in the deep, you're subject to whatever regulations or conditions they impose upon the community, and not knowing what that financial amount would be, sort of change, not sort of, it does change how this entire transaction looks. What I do think is important, there's two things this evening that are very important moving forward. I think it's imperative that we work with the University of Connecticut to make certain that the Miracle League fields remain as Miracle League fields, to be playgrounds for those who suffer intellectual and physical disabilities. I was a member of the council that was here when the volunteers in our community raised the necessary funds, the town appropriated the balance, to make certain that that does not change, because the importance and significance of the use of that property to so many members in our own community and that in the region has been demonstrated. And I know from where I sit, that will be something that I'd be quite vigilant to make certain that we are able to preserve going forward. And I, I think that that's a position that can be easily supported by everyone sitting around this table. The second thing that is essential here going forward is, as Mr. Dodge, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Wenigrad pointed out already, is that it's so important that we engage the community as to what they would like to see and what they consider to be the best use of that parcel going forward. As the owner of that parcel, though, we don't control what is acceptable to the owner. But what, if we can get into a position, and we've done ourselves, I think, a lot of good over the years by being honest and upright, upfront with the University of Connecticut, to work in concert with them, to seek the best option for our community, and being a development partner with them, so that we can bring the best options to our community, I think would serve our community well. Let's not lose fact of the, the situation that we have fifty-eight acres of land in a very residential component of our, our community. There is a lot of demand on our budget going forward, and will continue to place a demand, and that the best position going forward would be one that would take a parcel, which is currently a non-tax-producing parcel, into one that would generate revenue and add to our grand list. So I commend the committee for reaching the conclusion that it has reached this evening, but it's more than that. And what's really more than that is that component about, we're just not really walking away from this and saying, okay, University of Connecticut, you're on your own. No, we're really wish to stay engaged, we wish to have our residents be part of a decision that affects our community moving forward. And this willingness on our part, I think, will be beneficial to our entire community in the years and the generations to come. So for all those reasons, I will be supporting the resolution as presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Ms. Fay, does she have any questions, comments?
Mary, you there?
Yeah, hi, Beth, and everybody else, thank you. I think it's been summed up pretty well. I guess where I'm coming from is I've had the benefit of entering into this picture a little bit late, so for those of you who started early, thank you for your hard work and diligence. So as an objective resident prior to being elected, I could see the pros and the cons. It's certainly a wonderful opportunity in terms of the size and location of the parcel, and, you know, that's, that's readily apparent to probably everybody in town with the limited open space that we do have left. So the opportunity is recognized, but once, you know, the cover started coming off and you started to see some of the environmental issues, I'm very, very pleased the way that the council appointed the subcommittee to really drive this further and get to a conclusion where we could feel comfortable, and I think the net conclusion is, basically, we're not. And I fully support the decision to not go forward with the purchase as is, but to stay vigilant and involved, and to get the community involved, to see what they would like to be done with the property. And to everybody else's point, we're not walking away, we're still involved, we're still in it, and if there's any substantial change, whether they be regulatory or somebody else coming in and remediating, I think, you know, we can start the conversation of who should own the property. But right now, I think where we end up is a perfect spot, and I think it addresses all the open issues. And I look forward to working with the community to see where they see this land being of value to, to everybody in town. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Mr. Hart, I know you came in, this, you sort of inherited this process, do you have any thing you'd like to share?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I believe the committee's recommendation is wise. You know, as several of you have stated, the environmental testing is not yet complete, we really don't have a, a complete estimate as to what the remediation costs might be. Now, we have some idea, but not nearly a complete estimate. We've also learned that the regulatory agencies deep in EPA would likely require the town to immediately commence remediation activities, so that, that would certainly be a challenge for the town to, to handle. However, I think the committee has also recommended that the town not step away from this property. You know, the property remains of prime interest to the council, to the town, you know, you're going to immediately conduct a community engagement effort to solicit input from the community at large regarding potential uses at that property, and potentially, that community engagement effort will, will enable us to attract a partner, where we could seek to engage someone who we could work with to develop the property for the future benefit of the community. So in summary, I believe that the committee's, subcommittee's recommendation is, is wise. I would also like to acknowledge the good work of town staff, our technical team of experts, I think we were able- I think we were ably, ably served there. And I would commend the University of Connecticut for their willingness to work with us. And I believe they'll be willing to work with us moving forward as well. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Thank you, Mr. Dodge, as well as Mr. Barnes and Mr. Wintegrad for organizing these productive meetings and shepherding us through this decision. You understood it was critical to have the parties in attendance that were experts in their fields so we could all have the opportunity to ask important questions. This included Mark McGovern, who initially sought to do the testing and continued to keep us focused on what was important. You also had individuals there that were involved in the evaluations, spoke about the cost of the remediation as well as the mitigation, experts in environmental law, our own town staff, as well as our town manager. Everyone at that meeting was engaged and took this decision very seriously. One of the most interesting questions for me was from Mr. Sweeney, who basically asked, in the town's history, have we ever been involved in a project of this sort? And quite frankly, the answer, surprised to me, was that this was unique. And not only was it unique to West Hartford, but it was also unique to Yukon. That in the past, though, West Hartford had taken on Delamar and Blueback Square, it was the developer whose expertise really drove the remediation of both those properties that were contaminated, not unlike the Yukon property. It was always our intention on the council to safeguard our community of unwanted development as well as blight, but not at the financial risk of our residents. Our highest priority has always been to control. And we always understood, we don't have the expertise to develop, but at the right price, we could acquire the property to determine its destiny, to control its destiny. We could immediately engage the community to hear from them, some of what we've heard already, which is, how about a dog park, a children's museum, athletic field, a revenue generator, and immediately seek a developer to match our vision. With the Yukon generously agreeing to give us extension after extension after extension, we could finally get to a bottom line cost. Unfortunately, at this time, Yukon has asked for our agreement without a final dollar amount to the liability. So at this time, we cannot in good conscience agree to buy a question mark. The fiscally conservative thing to do is to discontinue this agreement, but to work closely with Yukon to meet both of our goals. Mark has agreed to make an ambitious outreach to our community for their engagement, his highest priority. And then we will send out requests to developers that will match our vision. With the new town manager at the helm, Mr. Hart, we have a better understanding of the parcel set before us. We are all excited about moving to the next chapter, the next chapter where we can work together with Yukon without taking unnecessary risk and for the right price, deliver to our community 58 acres that will work for all of us. So on that note, we have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. What's it?
You should just ask for opposed.
Oh, opposed? Sorry. Okay, the ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Dodge. Mr. Wintegrad. It was Mr. Barnes.
You got the property!
No.
That's yours!
No, it was really well done. I really, you should be proud. It's a good subcommittee.
of Connecticut Board of Trustee, and I recuse myself on both sides just to be extra special safe. So I appreciate all the work that everybody has done on this.
Welcome back.
All right, thank you. Number 11, I am just going to explain that we initially, after the town, that this town received the latest cut with the state budget of $2.2 million, we had done some thinking and some work in the Finance and Budget Committee on how to address our AAA bond rating watch. There were a couple of, there are a couple of issues that we really need to address. And one is building up our undesignated fund balance, and the other is to strengthen our pension liability funding levels. And at the time, we were working with some pro forma, some estimates. We have since had some more information and some more, we've had some tax appeals to settle, and we have some additional property taxes in. And we do feel that we can do all of that with the existing stream of revenue. So I am making a motion that we table this. And that's it. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we adopt a resolution to appropriate and transfer capital nonrecurring expenditure, CNRE, fund balance in the amount of $3,200,000 to increase fund balance of the general fund.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Hart, this actually goes on a little more detail onto what we were, I had just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And this item is coming out of the Finance and Budget Committee. And it's also intended to help shore up the town's bond rating, which is very important to us. I would ask our Director of Finance, Mr. Privatera, to come forward and provide a brief overview to the council, and then we can both take any questions you may have.
This appropriation would increase our reserve level from 8.1%, where we are, up to 9%. I think all of you know that West Hartford is a AAA rated community by Moody's and S&amp;P. Back in October, when there was a lot of uncertainty with the state budget, one day we were down $1 million, the next day we were down $19 million. I think Moody's felt compelled that they had to issue a report. And that report basically stated, there's a certain number of communities that were probably going to be downgraded, and another group of communities that were going to be put on a negative watch. We were put on the negative watch, only because Moody's felt that worst-case scenario, and I think that was the governor's second executive order, if that came to fruition, we couldn't cut our way out of it. The only way we could balance our budget was to appropriate our rainy day fund. And if we did that, we would use up all that money. Subsequently, when the state budget was adopted and the additional cut we took after that, we were down a little under $7 million of state aid. But if most of you recall, last year when we adopted the budget, we set aside $7 million in contingency as an offset. So the net result was a kind of a wash. So my expectation is, is that Moody's will take us off the negative watch when we sell bonds in January. However, we've had a lot of discussions with Moody's over the years. We have a very robust capital program. We issue debt every year. And Moody's has said to us on a number of occasions, your current ratio is well below your peer communities. The average AAA rated community in Connecticut has a fund balance of about 13%. So after discussions with our financial advisor, and given the fact that there's going to be more uncertainty with state budgets to come, he recommended that we take whatever action we needed to take to increase our fund balance ratio. And that's what we're doing with this. Now, the money that we're using to do this, if you recall, last year, we had $3.2 million of surplus. We put it into the CNRE fund for two reasons. Number one, we weren't sure if the city of Hartford was going to go bankrupt and default on their MDC payment. So we had to set that money aside just in case the MDC came back to us with an additional tax warrant. And we had a little extra money left over, and we put it in CNRE as well, just in case our $7 million estimate was too low on what we were going to get cut. So that $3.2 million is available, and if appropriated, it'll raise our fund balance from 8.1% up to 9%. And I think what Moody's will be looking for is, when we, the town manager, myself, and some other department heads will be doing a presentation to Moody's on the 19th of December, and we're going to disclose this if you vote this through, I think what Moody's is also looking for is, down the road, a structured approach to increasing our fund balance. Right now, all we've been doing is maintaining our fund balance with surplus from year to year. But I think in the future, we'll probably have another discussion on how we can stabilize that and try to get to a higher level, not in the short term, but in the long term, of about 10% to start, and then move from there. Because it's very important for us to maintain this AAA rating. Number one, our borrowing costs are lower. And number two, it fosters more economic development. Companies love to come into communities that are financially stable. So I ask for your approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Privatera. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes.
And Ms. Barnes?
Thank you. Mr. Privatera, so during our Finance and Budget meeting about a week or so ago, there were two recommendations that were made, and we followed up at a pension board meeting the following Monday discussing the items. One we've addressed, which is using the CNRE funds to bolster the reserve fund to increase the funded percentage up to 9%. And I think we've talked about hopefully getting somewhere to about 13% over time, and we're going to talk about how to get that done as we move forward. The second part relates to the item that we marked off earlier, but I think it's important to talk about what we want to do in that with respect to the discount rate, why that's important, and that, in fact, we're still going to continue to go forward with that. So if you could just briefly explain what that second part of this, you know, bolstering of the pension liabilities, that'd be helpful.
Just to give you a, just a brief history, last year, when we met with the pension board to go over the interim valuation, the town's actuary, it's an outside consulting firm, made a statement that he believed our discount rate. Now, our discount rate, for those of you who don't understand it, is the asset growth on a year-over-year basis of our pension investments. He made a statement that the discount rate was too high, and he was concerned about signing the valuation because, you know, what he said was, if I'm signing this, I'm confirming that I'm agreeing with your rate of return. I'm doing it this year, but I strongly recommend that you start to reduce that discount rate. And what it is, it was at 7.5%. So I made a proposal to the town manager. Initially, it was based on the motor vehicle tax revenue. But I made a proposal to the town manager that we ask the pension board to consider reducing the discount rate to 7.25% by 1/4%. That would put us well on our way to getting down to the statewide average, which is 7%. A few years down the road, we can probably do an eighth of a percent drop a year till we get to 7%. And it's important because our financial advisor, our investment advisor, he runs a scenario every year for us. And his best-case scenario was about 6.6% return. Now, we add a couple of different options to that. We have an automatic rebalancing of our portfolio. That gives us a greater rate of return. And we also have some active managers in certain large funds that also bolsters our rate of return. So right now, our actuary is saying, you're good for 7, 7.25% if you can get down there. So the proposal was to get down to 7.25%. Now, a couple of things happened. Number one, the discount rate alone increased our pension contribution. And also, the actuary recommended that we use new mortality tables that were available. Mortality tables are basically telling us that the pensioners are living longer and they're getting paid longer with their pension, so it's going to cost us more. So we had some initial cost estimates. The final cost estimate came through. It was roughly $2.26 million, roughly about the same amount as the increase in the motor vehicle tax, which I originally proposed. Recently, I met with the town manager and I informed him that we just updated our projection for the current fiscal year. And we were fortunate that some of the settlements that were being made with disputed assessments were lower than we had planned, and I think I disclosed that to the Finance and Budget Committee. Also, there was a parcel, I believe was a nursing home, that was, that was nonprofit at one point, was sold for profit, and that put an additional $12 million of property on our books. And that, as well, will generate another $400,000 to $500,000 a year. So right now, when you see our next projection, we're going from a $1.6 million projection last month to roughly a $3.1 million projection moving forward. So we feel that if we can identify some of that surplus at the end of the year, we can use that to mitigate or smooth out the spike we're going to see over the next few years of going down in our discount rate. And I think after the second year, we're going to start to see our unfunded liability start decreasing at a pretty good rate. And our normal costs is what we pay on existing employees is going down as well. So all the indicators are that we're going to have a downward trajectory on our future increases on our contributions.
Very good. Well, thank you for that very full response. Appreciate that. So essentially, what we're doing is, we're taking two positive actions with respect to pension fund. We're bolstering the reserve fund. We're lowering the discount rate. Originally, we considered using a car tax increase up to the 37 mils to fund that. The council's decided not to do that, and we're going to use surplus during this current year, surplus, to be able to do that, to accomplish that reduction.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Anybody else? No. So, Mr. Privatera, thank you very, very much for all of your work. I mean, this budget that allowed us to do these things and shore up our undesignedated fund balance and our pension came out of some very, very good planning and some good advice from you. I also want to thank my members of the council who put us in this position because we are able to respond to the challenges that we've been faced. And I want to thank our taxpayers very, very much for also doing the same.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I appreciate you very much. With that, we will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we adopt a resolution amending the fees for various recreation facilities.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Hart, can you? Oh, okay.
So this item, we are seeking the council's approval to amend various fees for some of our recreational facilities. The town staff, we do periodically make these recommendations to the council. We did review these with your Human Services Committee. And I'm pleased that Ms. Rabino Turco is here this evening, our Director of Leisure and Social Services, and she can provide an overview of our recommendation to you and assist with any questions.
Thank you.
So as you probably know, the leisure services fees that we charge at our facilities are governed by the town council. And so from time to time, we come before you to adjust our rates. And some of our facilities are in the enterprise fund, some are in the general fund. So we're always looking at comparing what our neighboring towns doing, what our similar facilities charging, so that we can remain competitive. And this is particularly important in, for example, the enterprise fund. So some of the changes that you have before you, most of the changes are at Rockledge and at Buena Vista. These are two golf courses that, the 18-hole, of course, Rockledge Golf Course, and the nine-hole executive course at Buena Vista. And we have not adjusted the rates at these two facilities for two years. And usually, we come to you at about this time of year so that we can make these adjustments in time for the new golf season. And that's the case today. We are not suggesting any changes for 18 holes. As you can imagine, the ladies' league and the men's league that play at Rockledge, we're very happy to hear that. The changes that we do have are in the nine-hole area. And again, these are so that we can remain competitive in the marketplace. I wanted to, the changes to go up $1 on the nine holes for the weekdays and $1 on the weekends. And this is a typical rate increase that you might see at Rockledge. I do want to point out that there's no change in the rates for seniors, either for residents or non-residents. And we're happy about that. Another change that we're proposing there is to add a category that encourages, that gives a discount for... gives a discount for full-time students. And this is a way of engaging some of the younger golfers. So this is for college students who might go to Central or might go to University of Hartford, and this gives them a chance to stay active and keep connected with golf. We always want to encourage the junior golf program whenever we can. And the changes at Buena Vista, again, are very modest. The changes there are only for residents, and again, we feel that the market can bear this change. These are market rates, and we're going up $1 from $11 to $12 for a nine-hole for residents on the weekdays, and then a dollar increase on the weekend as well. There's no change for non-residents. And we also, in order to increase the staff efficiency, because we have less staff at Buena Vista, we sometimes don't staff it at all, and we just have someone from, skating rink goes over and, you know, might collect fees on the golf course. But to, most of the time, we have one person that's over there kind of handling the, at the starter shack. And this eliminates the need to prove your residency every time. We're just going to have the same discount whether you're a resident or a non-resident. And this is also just a way of kind of streamlining how things are done there. It eliminates having to chase people around, and a lot of times, the junior golfers, when they come, they don't have IDs, so, you know, it kind of defeats the purpose of having this discounted card for a resident and nothing for a non-resident. So those are the only changes that are taking place at Rockledge and Buena Vista. Again, very modest, minor changes. The other changes that we're proposing in that same vein in the enterprise fund is at Cornerstone Aquatic Center. As you know, we have a new management company there. They took over on July 1st. The rates at Cornerstone haven't changed since 2015, so it's been a couple of years. And we really wanted the new ownership to get in there and get the lay of the land and really get to meet and understand what their memberships were like. And they quickly discovered, as if we didn't know already, that the structure was very complicated to become a member there. And there were lots of scenarios and caveats and small, fine print that really kind of confused the public. And so we encouraged them to review how the membership is structured, what the prices are. They did research of similar facilities across New England. We're not competing with a sports club. You know, this is an aquatics facility, but what this company is also bringing is value-added. So they're adding in some, what they call, dry land fitness programs that will be free for members and will be charged for non-members. So what they've done is simplified the membership. What was called before, a swimming membership is called a platinum membership, and what the low-usage membership is now a gold. We thought low-usage was rather negative. And so this, the platinum and the gold, again, very similar. You know, if you swim all the time, you become a platinum member. If you're going to be an infrequent user, the gold is what you want to do. We've eliminated program passes. There used to be this thing where you could pay a membership fee for a program pass and then pay every time you went to take the program. And we've just decided that if you're a member, take the class for free, and if you're not a member, then pay for the class. And that sort of eliminates this punch cards and the nickel-and-diming that we kind of felt was happening. The, another change is that we want to encourage people to become memberships. And the initiation fee was rather high, we thought. It was $59, $55 for a regular person, you know, an individual, and $75 for a family. And we've decided to drop that substantially to $20. It's basically $20 per adult. So if you're a family, it's $40. If you're two seniors, it's $40. If you're a senior, it's $20. So that will encourage people to become members and take advantage of some of these really excellent fitness programming that will be going on there. They're introducing things like water yoga. Okay? So you get a board, and you're on the board, and you're doing yoga. And it's really good core, apparently. Good exercise. We have aqua cycling, there's aqua aerobics, there's deep-water aerobics, there's shallow-water aerobics. These are very popular programs, especially during the day with our senior residents. And certainly, the lap swim remains a very strong component. Another new change is that we are lowering the definition of an adult from 21 to 18. And you will think, you know, this is a major change, but it actually isn't. There's only three people who fall in this age category who are platinum members, and about 128 families that have people in this category. But at the same time, we're introducing a discount for, if you're a full-time student. So the changes in the discounts are, of course, there's a discount if you're a resident with disabilities. There'll be a discount if you're a full-time student, and that includes college students or medical students at the University of Connecticut. And this is where we've been getting these requests of, "Can you have a student membership?" And the third is a discount for active military. This is something we haven't offered before, and we're very happy that this is something that the management at Cornerstone is very much in favor of. So again, those are the major changes there. Another change that you'll see at Cornerstone is in the swim lessons. And the price of swim lessons is actually going down, but it costs more because there's seven lessons instead of six. We are following the American Red Cross standard. Cornerstone had its own standard, apparently, before, and it was six lessons. And we're following the American Red Cross standard of seven lessons. So now, if you're a resident and you are taking a lesson, instead of being $11.50 a lesson, it's $10.71 a lesson. So you can see that we're just trying to upgrade things, make things more efficient, increase what you get for your membership. A major perk for the gold member, the low-usage member, is that we're increasing the allowable hours. Before, you can swim during restricted hours, but we've added some evening hours so that people who are low, who don't go that often but would like to swim in the evening now have an opportunity where they didn't before. The last changes that we're suggesting is in the general fund, and this is at our senior We know that senior centers are a wonderful source for helping encourage seniors to remain engaged in their community. And memberships provide a great way to stay informed about those programs and to keep them engaged in those programs. Memberships provide reduced rates for trips, programs, special events. We also are revamping the senior bulletin. It's now going to be called "The Bulletin." And there's other perks for members. The increase is from $10 to $15 for residents and $30, from $30 to $40 for non-residents. And you might wonder what this means to a resident. It's 41 cents a month. So it's, the rates have not gone up for 10 years. It's actually still quite competitive in membership compared to other communities. We have two senior center directors, Gina Moreno, who runs the West Hartford Senior Center in Bishop's Corner, and Kathleen Ferone, who runs the Elmwood Senior Center that's located at Elmwood Community Center. They do a wonderful job, not just engaging with the residents, but also engaging with the business community to help offset some of the costs of their programs. So they already have businesses that will sponsor different activities and keeps the cost down. But of course, all of the general fund budgets are under scrutiny, as they should be, and also have been subjected to some cuts. And in order to be able to provide the programs that we want to as many residents and senior residents as we can, we did feel that this was, the time was right for increasing the memberships. We do expect that this will bring in additional revenue, but it's more about what we're providing for our seniors than it is about the revenue that's coming in. So again, these changes are fairly minimal in the, over the course of the entire year. But if a senior does have a problem with the rate increase, they can always come to Social Services, and with qualifications, we would provide a scholarship through the Leisure Services Scholarship Fund for this activity. This isn't something that the Town that Cares would cover because it's not an urgent kind of need, but the Leisure Services Scholarship Fund would be available if seniors had an issue with the rate.
Thank you, Ms. Rubino Turco. It's a lot of work. Is there anyone that would like to ask questions or comment? Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have some questions on the senior center, senior center membership adjustments. Was this presented to the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission at all? Was there any input from them?
That is a great question. I don't know the answer to that. I apologize, because the two senior center directors were the ones that were attending that commission meeting. I think they did discuss it. I believe that Kathleen Ferone did discuss it, but I don't, I can't know that for sure.
I also think that they did. I did speak with Gina, and I thought she had talked to them about it, and she felt very comfortable with the changes.
I did, Gina Moreno did give me feedback from seniors, and they were all in positive comments, saying it's about time. And they also acknowledged that they get a lot of, they get a lot of bang for their buck.
And Gina pointed out they get free coffee. Anything else? Mr. Dodge?
I won't be long. I just want to thank you for simplifying the price structure at Cornerstone. Having two kids who I've tried to sign up for swim lessons there, before, it was incredibly confusing. It was not user-friendly, and I've heard from a number of parents that, who have heard about the new price structure, that the simplification is a real benefit to them. So I think that's one really probably of the most positive aspects to this. So thanks.
Thank you.
I did want to add that these changes will take place January 1st. The senior centers typically start their membership drive on January 1st, so this change will take place then. And the same thing will happen at Cornerstone. They're beginning a new marketing and community outreach, and that will be kicked off, as Matt Hart will tell you in a few minutes, I hope, will be kicked off on January 7th. They're having an open house, and they're inviting the community, come in and take a tour and see some classes, participate in some demonstration classes, and hopefully get lots of people interested in joining.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. I can't see Mr. Wannegrad on Mr. Dodge's cell. I don't know if he has it. All right? Nothing else? Thank you so much. I think these will be many, many good changes streamlined, but thank you so much. All right, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. And we're on to number 18, reports from the town manager, Mr. Hurt.
I've distributed copies of my report to the council. And Mayor, the last couple of pages are for you, including the report on Cornerstone, the open house at Cornerstone. That's in there, too.
Got it.
So first, under the category of council business, just want to report on one council committee, Community Planning and Physical Services, CPPS, will meet at 5:30 on Monday, the 18th. We've got a few key agenda items we're going to go over, including waste management and the Trout Brook Trail Project, and a couple of other things, too. Moving on to staff reports, and I'm just going to hit a few of these here, and you can read the rest of the report when you have time. Wanted to talk about the remonstrance hearing regarding Los Imperios. And on December 8th, the Department of Consumer Protection, DCP, they notified the town that it would not renew, would not renew the liquor permit for Los Imperios. And that was based on the remonstrance filed by our neighborhood residents. The mayor testified, our acting police chief, Coppinger, testified, as did Assistant Police Chief Bob McHugh. Their testimony obviously went a long way with the commission and was persuasive. And this, the DCP decision follows a recent Superior Court decision that had ordered Los Imperios to stop offering DJ or live entertainment without a valid entertainment license. So we've been monitoring, our police have been monitoring the situation closely and have reported no problems there since this November 30th order was issued. We will continue, however, to monitor things accordingly. Moving on, I wanted to touch base on an item on page two. Another item related to the police department, tips to prevent package thefts. So this is the time of year when folks are starting to receive a number of things through mail order, and oftentimes, packages are left at their home or their place of business. And the police department does offer some tips to folks to, as a prevention method. And they're listed here, and I think most of these are intuitive. If you're leaving instructions with a parcel of delivery services, you know, leave those instructions to keep those packages out of sight. Delivery should be placed on a side or back porch. It's important for folks to take in deliveries as soon as they arrive. We should track our packages and ensure them. If you're not home, have your packages delivered to you at your workplace or to a neighbor or friend. Pick packages up from your local post office or UPS Center or private mail service. Have Amazon purchases delivered to an Amazon locker, and one is located in the lobby of 65 Memorial. And utilize home security features if you have them. We really encourage folks to call the police department with any concerns if they observe any suspicious activities. Please let us know, and we can get out and take appropriate action. Moving on to a couple of things on page three, holiday gift card giving. Our Social Services Office is collecting $25 gift cards from stores such as Target, Walmart, and others, now through December 15th, which is the end of this business week. Gift cards will be distributed to folks in need at an annual holiday party that we convene on December 19th, and this is a really important service that we provide. Holiday closings, both Christmas and New Year's this year will fall on a Monday, so the collection of trash and recyclables and bulky waste will be delayed, delayed by one Moving on to page four, I did want to update the council on some recent progress that we've seen with the changes you've made to parking rates, and this is a new employee parking program that is being offered at the Town Center Garage, which is owned by Figure Eight Properties. As you will recall, the garage, they've offered, they're offering reduced-rate parking for retail and restaurant employees. And we're seeing more and more of these passes are being sold to employers and being used by their employees, which is great, you know? And this program, early on, we're pleased with the progress we're making. Last, but certainly not least, I'd like to wish the council and our community a very happy and safe holiday season, and I look forward to working with you in 2018. So that's my report, Mayor. Happy to take any questions that council members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. We are going to take questions, but then we have to go back up to number 17 for some reason. I missed that, so. How about, yes, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a real quick question, Mr. Town Manager. Leaf pickup, when is that running through? Do you know?
That is running through the end of the calendar year.
Okay. Thanks.
I know, it's always a little creepy seeing leaf bags in snow, isn't it?
It is.
I know. Anything else for the town manager?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Williams. Okay, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. I just want to recognize the work of everyone that was involved in Los Imperios. That's something that seems to have been around as long as the Yukon property in terms of issue, you know, on our agenda. So thanks to town staff, to the mayor, testified, the Acting Chief, and also the Assistant Police Chief as well. Is anybody else that was involved in, you know, basically, hopefully, shutting this place down? And I also wanted to add one other comment. During my Yukon comments, I mentioned some town staff, but I did leave out Corporation Council's office. And after I realized that all of the work that you guys put in with respect to the contract and negotiations and all of the hearings that you attended and meetings, didn't want to leave you guys out. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. I was also going to thank town staff for the work on Los Imperios because it was extensive, and the Police Department, it was, it was really a lot of effort. And I will say that the neighborhood is extremely appreciative of, of all of, of this work. I also wanted to thank Kristin Gorski for her work on the parking program. She really led, has led this, and it was a, this is unique. We have not been able to accomplish this before, and this really should help all of our residents in finding parking and, and hopefully for our, our businesses and their employees as well. So now, back up to seventeen. Ms. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we adopt a resolution delegating to the Town Manager and the Director of Financial Services the authority to issue bonds or temporary borrowing on behalf of the Town of West Hartford.
Second.
Motion's been a second. And Mr. Hart, do you want to speak to this? Any explanation?
Mayor, my understanding that this is, to some extent, pro forma. This is something you do every, every year, just to facilitate the debt issuance process.
Thank you. So, any questions? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. And now for announcements. I first want to start with a happy holiday season, but tonight is the first night of Hanukkah, so may your night be bright and the eight days of Hanukkah be festive and fun. And of course, the whole holiday season. Merry Christmas and to all a wonderful, wonderful season. Happy New Year. I also want to, as we approach the fifth year anniversary, bless you, of Sandy Hook, which will be on Thursday, December 14th, there will be a virtual moment of silence. It is a nonpartisan, interfaith event, moment, that is really remembering all victims of gun violence. And it's sponsored by JCRC, but it is an interfaith group that has Beth El Temple, Beth David, Beth Shalom, Beth Nae Tigfog, Charter of Cultural Center, Church of St. Thomas, Congregation Beth Israel, Connecticut Center for Nonviolence, Faith Congregation Church, Farmington Valley American Muslim Center, Farmington Valley Jewish Congregation, Amish Shalom, Farmington Valley League of Light, Hartford Seminary, St. Patrick's, St. Anthony, and Westminster. So there's a, and you can reach it by going to Facebook. Blood Drive Wednesday, December 13th, 12 to 5:30. Heroes come in all shapes and sizes. We invite you to become a hometown heroine, answer the call of patients in need. It will be, again, 12 to 5:30 in Town Hall Auditorium. Call 1-800-RED-CROSS or go to their website. Inspiring Equity Through Community Conversations. We All Have A Story To Tell Exhibit will showcase the stories of a diverse cross-section of our community members who are inspiring equity in West Hartford. This will be on December 14th and 16th, 6:30 to 8:30 in Town Hall Auditorium. With the use of Live Portrait app on mobile devices, you can see and hear the gallery images come alive. A companion book of the still photographs will be available for purchase. For more information, contact Michelle LaCroix at, Michelle underscore LaCroix at WHPS.org. Ballet Theaters Company, The Nutcracker, December 15th through 18th, will hold its production at the University of St. Joseph's. An aspiring cameo appearance will include service members from Fox Company, 2nd Battalion, 25th Marines. For information, please call 860-570-0440, or go to www.dancebtc.org. Mama Dee's Christmas Stockings, Where Santa, December 15th through 30th. It's backed by popular demand. Come celebrate the most wonderful time of the year with Mama Dee's Christmas Stocking Show, featuring music, dance, comedy. The show begins, will run, tickets are twenty-five dollars, special New Year's Eve show, and the clock strikes twelve, dessert and champagne will be served. Tickets are sixty dollars. All seats are reserved. It doesn't say where this is, though. I think it's the Playhouse, yeah, on Park. Tenth Annual Hanukkah Celebration, Fire on Ice, Sunday, December 17th at 4:00 p.m. Everyone is invited to celebrate as they observe a master ice carver sculpt a giant menorah at 4:00 p.m. in Blue Beck Square. The free program will feature a grand fire show, interactive construction of a huge Lego dreidel, live Jewish music, and entertainer activities for all ages, free raffles and prizes and food. Park Road Neighborhood collects Toys for Tots now through December 21st. In the spirit of giving, several businesses on Park Road have joined efforts with WDRC's Talk of Connecticut to collect toys for the 2017 Toys for Tots Drive. New unwrapped toys can be brought to any of the fifteen drop-off locations between now and December 21st, or during the live broadcast on Friday, December 22nd. Go to parkroadct.com for the list of drop-off sites. Cash donations are also accepted. Checks must be payable to Toys for Tots. And Winter Warming Coat Drive, now through December 21st. Local businesses have teamed up to collect new and gently-used coats, hats, mittens, and gloves for those in need, all ages between now and December 21st. Drop-off locations are Diswane Clotheers, Keating Agency Insurance, We Care Computers, Noah Webster House, Life for Fitness Studio, Bartlett, Brainerd Products, and Maximum Beverage. Hopefully, you know where some of those are. Grand reopening at Cornerstone Aquatics Center is what we just were talking about on January 7th, 12 to 3:00 p.m. You are invited to tour the facility, including the newly completed, fully accessible family changing rooms. Visit the weight room or join an aqua fitness class in the multipurpose pool or fitness studio. Demonstration classes will be held, water spin, water yoga, Zumba yoga, and more. Fun-filled activities for the whole family ring in the new year with a new fitness plan. For more information, visit cornerstoneaquatics.org or call 860-561-8270. Anyone have anything else? Mr. Davidoff?
I promised my eldest daughter I'd wish her a happy 22nd birthday, and she's probably just waiting to now go out and, and celebrate now. So have a good time, Becky.
Be careful. All right, anything else? All right, number 20, reports from Corporation Council. Mr. Allard?
Thank you. I have no formal report. I would, however, join you in thanking my staff, Kimberly Bonham and Garman Neesum, for all the work they did on Los Imperios. Kimberly has been involved since the shish days, and Los Imperios, or the most recent injunction action was handled by Garman, where we got a preliminary injunction. So in addition to the remonstrance, there's a preliminary injunction and an eviction proceeding pending against them. So their, their future in their current form is not looking bright, although we would welcome any restaurant to that space. Let's be clear about that. We do need an executive session, I'm sorry, for the purpose of discussing a potential settlement in the matter of Holly Jean Frito et al. versus City of West Hartford. And I'd ask that, at the appropriate time, you move into executive session for that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Allard. Any questions for Mr. Allard? No? Okay. So now we are on to appointments. I have a paragraph of appointments, so I am going to start, and then I will flip to Mr. Barnes, who has a couple, I think? And, and then we will move them all together. Apoints, these are reappoint, most of them are reappoints. Dana Gordon as Town Council Zoning Alternate for a term ending 12/31/2020. Joe Stafford as Town Council Zoning Alternate for a term ending 12/31/2020. Also Kate Farrar as Town Council Zoning Alternate for a term ending 20/31/2020. Scott Sebastian for the Concert, to the Conservation and Environment Commission for a term ending 20/31/2022. William Prentzky to the Board of Assessors for a term ending 20/31/22. Shelley Rosen to the Board of Assessors for a term ending 12/31/2022. Joshua Rucker to the Persons with Disability Commission for a term ending 12/31/2020. Rebecca Hojosy to the Persons with Disability Commission for a term ending 12/31/2020. Nicholas Delaney to the Persons with Disabilities Commission for a term ending 12/31/2020. James Bergen to the Ethics Commission for a term ending 11/19/2019. Pamela Howard to the Historic District Commission for a term ending 12/31/2022. Barry Walters to the Human Rights Commission for a term ending 12/31/2020. Judy Borden to the Human Rights Commission for a term ending 20/12/31/2020. Krishna Adikari, I'm sorry, to the Human Rights Commission for a term ending 12/31/2020. Terry Schmidt to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for a term ending 12/31/2020. John Mintz to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for a term ending 12/31/2020. Brian Clifford to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for a term ending 12/31/2020. Gordon Binkhorst as an alternate member to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending 12/31/2022. Kevin Prestige to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for a term ending 12/31/2022. Kate Miller to the Housing Authority for a term ending 12/31/2021. Jill Spear to the Library Board for a term ending 12/31/2022. And appoint Todd Doyle from alternate to regular member on Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending 12/31/2022. Michael Damato as alternate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending 12/31/2022. And Joseph Kozinski to the Persons with Disability Commission for a term ending 12/31/2020. And Sean Mulready to the Fellowship Housing. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. Just a few reappointments. Council friend Denise Berard-Hall to the Metropolitan District Commission for a term ending 12/31/2023. Kim Evans to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending 12/31/2020. Jared Grisay to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Zoning Board of Appeals Board for a term ending 12/31/2022.
Thank you. So motion, second?
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, Ms. LeBrow, for organizing us and filling all these, reappointing and appointing all of our wonderful volunteers. Okay, we are on to number 29.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 30, Ms. Kerrigan?
I move we receive communication.
Did you read it, though?
From, from Thomas F. Foley, 11/16/2017, resigning from the Zone, zoning Board of Appeals.
Um, yeah.
Can I just do all three of them?
No. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 31.
I move we receive from Deb Foley, 11/20/2017, resigning from the Advisory Commission for Persons with Disabilities.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 32.
I move we receive from Sagar Patel, 11/27/2017, resigning from the Substance Abuse Prevention Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for your service. And there are no petitions, and there is an executive session. Number 34, so we will be back to adjourn. Thank you. I'm sorry, motion to move into executive session?
Second.
You second? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?